Good evening, I'd like to call the Springfield High School, or the Springfield Local Schools Board meeting for August 19, 2025, for order. Mr. Adams?
This is Frola.
Yes, I'm here.
Ms. Terry?
Here.
Mr. Hofer?
Here.
Mr. Furlong?
Here.
Mr. Mason?
Here.
Thank you. Would you please stand your little voice? Alright, yes ma'am. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Yeah, this is, as you may know, Tom Fleming retired this year. We have his belt here in Woods, we'll mail it to him. So Tom decided, he retired on June 1st of 2025. He taught in the district for 32 years, and he was hired as a junior high science teacher, and that's where he spent his 32 years.
Wow.
So, you know, and he touched a lot of kids, and he is definitely going to be missed. He also coached both basketball and track throughout his tenure. So, so he will be missed.
Hey, excuse me. Board members informal. We'll start with the birthday girl.
Happy 29!
Happy 29!
I can't believe how fast summer went. I am not ready for this year, only because of one of my kids being a senior, but I'm excited with all the new faces and new people and everything like that. Buildings look great. Gone through like two, gone and Shrop, but everything looks great, and I'm excited. So, I know Donnie has a lot, and I don't want to like step on his toes, I think. Oh, you don't? Okay. But that's all I have.
Just large grant for old people.
I don't have any comments.
Ms. Furlong?
Just had a few. I just wanted to thank all the boosters this summer for the band and sports teams. Tara, Miranda, Kelly, Chad, Amanda, and Courtney for all jumping in and leading that charge. Thanks to the teachers for getting those last-minute preps to their classrooms. Administration for spending your entire summer hiring and recruiting and interviewing, that's pretty awesome. I did want to say congratulations to Mr. Fleming too. He's an awesome guy, so very excited about that. Volleyball game tonight, let's check that out. You did go to the band, right?
Band show. I should have mentioned that.
Mrs. Fraley promised me an Ozzy Osbourne tribute.
Oh!
Hopefully that will be coming up in one of the football games. Very pleased to announce that we have five candidates running for board, so I think that's really great to see the numbers out there. Dave, I'll give you a chance to talk about PLCC if you want to handle that part. And then, um... What is my last case? We attended Senator Weinstein's town hall last week. Dave went along with me. Please do your research, find out how this school funding works, see what the pushbacks are, see how they're trying to replace it in the timetables. They're working on some pretty strong algorithms right now to help every property owner or owner-occupied buildings, so I'm really hoping that comes to fruition and helps settle everybody. And that's all I got.
I'll pick up off where he left off on PLCC. Last Thursday, we formally introduced Lisa Trippney as the new PLCC superintendent. After a lot of fanfare and discussion, we went into a search with the help of the ESC, your friend Shelley Jeff Ferguson was co-pointing on that one. And we ended up getting three candidates. It was very, very interesting to watch. I've been through, this is my fourth superintendent search. We had two board members that hadn't done any superintendent search, so it was very educational for them. I kind of knew in my heart where I sat, and it was interesting to watch where the other board members at PLCC settled in. We interviewed the first two candidates, and everybody's writing notes, the answers, because we all had a question, and we went round robin. And then we got to Lisa, and she started off, and people were writing, and all of a sudden I just kind of watched everybody put their pens down, and I looked over at Jeff, and I said, "Once she's done, don't let her go home." I knew at that point in time she was going to be the new superintendent. So that went off of the fanfare. She has updated the board and the community off of last Thursday's telecast or taping, and you can look at that there. For me, of course, you know I'm kind of tied into transportation, I do drive occasionally. So I had that opportunity last Friday, and the buses, oh my goodness, Dustin, the transportation guys, Davy and Darren have done a wonderful job. I like Bus 12. Bus 12's an older bus, it's 180,000 miles on it. And I'm doing my pre-check trip inspection, and I'm like, "Man, them rims look new." And the bumper looks new, and the outline of the bus looks really clean, and inside of buses, like immaculate. And I'm like, "Wow!" So Davy goes, "Yeah, we put spray paint on them, make them look really nice." And it was really nice, and then you get underneath for our, and because you all know, we went in-house, so I want the taxpayers to know that the underside of those buses, they've been prepped too. So for rust control, and I was highly impressed with that. Bus 12 always drives nice. But I got to drive boys golf, which is that Jack Morgan told me, seven and one. So look for them to make a run, I think. They have a couple of star players that are, I was like, "I wish I could swing the golf club that good." Speaking of routing, for parents for next year, see like this year, when you know you're signing up your kid, get them in as soon as you can on the register, because you'll see later in the agenda, there's dockets for routes, and they're like really long, hundreds of pages. And every time we ended up getting a new student signed up, somebody has to go back in and add that, and it modifies the route. But it takes a lot of time, and then you got to spend more paper, and it drives the bus drivers crazy. One that I can speak, it's like, "Oh no, another change to the route." So next year, if you think about that. Let's move to the parking lot, the 12th graders. Awesome parking spots for your 12th graders. Love the artwork. It's really, really, I really like that. It's just a nice twist to send off your senior year. We didn't do that back in the late 70s, but it is a nice job. In Columbus, not much is happening. They're on summer recess, House Bill 66 was still, they overrode the governor's veto. That happens to do with emergency levies, renewals, and we're waiting for the Senate. I think when the House and Senate convene for the fall conferences, we'll see that. And by the way, so when a school bus stops and the red lights are out, just be warned that if you pass one, unfortunately, fortunately, if you pass one, it's unfortunate. You shouldn't be doing that. It's a safety hazard for our students, not only ours, but all those across the state. Fortunately, the fines are double, so don't pass the school bus, please. Have a great year.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to see two events prior to the start of school. I went to Safety Town, and I really enjoyed watching the kindergarteners. And I want to ask Shelley, if, you know, we say they go to Safety Town, and we haven't, but can you say a little, or can you describe a little bit about where the helmets come from, where the, you know, what's the structure?
Oh, so the structure is, it's a lot of donations, and the police department puts together, it's Springfield Police Department, does the majority of work, but Lake Moore helps out with it.
Do the helmets come from a grant donation for Akron Children's?
Yes, through Akron Children's, it's all safety. So the kids get helmets for their heads. They learn bus safety. They learn, they have a little city set up, and they drive their little cars, and they learn, you know, crosswalks and safety. They talk about stranger danger. They, this year, they actually went to the police department and got to see the police trucks and the police cars, the fire trucks and everything. They also then got to ride a bus, and they went to Spring Hill. They got to see Spring Hill, they came back, and then we have a great graduation for it. So it is really, if you ever have a chance to come see it, it's really a fun activity.
One thing that I found was educational, and was also good to see, there was one, you know, how they have the buses, the streets coming up, there's an intersection, and the kids are going around and around, and one old boy came up to one of the intersections, and he became a policeman. He's like, "Go ahead, stop!" So it really was, it was, I was impressed with it, and I...
They do an amazing job. They do an amazing job.
And as I said, we've heard Safety Town, Safety Town, but when I, you know, where do the helmets come from? Where did this come from? So, thank you.
And then like the little cars that they drive, like I know the Springfield Women's Club donated, I mean, so they ask for donations to update the little cars.
They're very nice. And then I got to go to, I attended the convocation, and was able to see what the new staff as a whole, you know, in entirety looked like. And I thought, it's been a lot of years, you know, before that, or since I've seen that. So I was, it was a fulfilling, it was a fulfilling day. Oh, and here comes guess me.
Well, hello, Mr. Fleming!
There he is!
Well, hello, Mr. Fleming! How are you?
So I've done it fine, so now let's go back up to number four, which you're late for. We're going up to number four and recognize Mr. Thomas Fleming, who I used to see in the hallways a whole lot. He was usually well-behaved.
Yes.
Usually.
So everybody, this is Mr. Fleming, and Mr. Fleming has been with Springfield for 32 years. And what's amazing is that he started off as a middle school science teacher. And you stayed a middle school scientist.
I did, the entire time, yes.
So why? What?
Ah, it's, you know, you either love that age or you don't.
Ah, this is true. And you love science or you don't.
Oh, well, yeah, I definitely love science, and I, it was a natural fit from the beginning. I mean, Mrs. Frola was a mentor of mine. We spent some time teaching together, language arts, right Cynthia?
Wow!
Yeah, yeah. So it was just a natural fit, and once I did it, I never wanted to do anything else.
That is awesome. That is awesome. That's what I love about teaching, you know, once you're a teacher, you're always a teacher.
Yes.
Well, here's a little...
Well, thank you so much. Thank you so much.
You know what? Thank you. The kids are truly, you know, the future generations are going to truly miss out on Mr. Fleming, and you are going to be missed terribly.
Well, the feeling's mutual, and the shoes will be filled, no doubt. I do want to say thank you so much to the school district for giving me the opportunity to have such a rewarding career. I'd like to say, I mean, thanks to so many people. There's no way you could possibly name the names, administration, school board, all my colleagues, dear friends, Friends for Life, people that I will continue to enjoy after retirement. I would love to say thank you to the thousands of kids that graced my classroom. I'll try not to get choked up. This is harder than you might believe. I mean, I am excited for this new chapter, but this is tough. It really is. And thanks so much to those thousands of kids for showing me so much love, so much respect. And just to everybody, the support staff, just everybody that's been there for me and enabled me to enjoy this profession for this amount of time. I mean, it's really a sad thing to close the book on this chapter, and I would also like to say thanks to my dogs.
And you're one of the students who loves the dogs.
Sawley Guinness and Mabel for helping me put smiles on the kids' faces. And a special thanks to my wife for putting up with all those exhausted evenings. I mean, one thing about that age group is they take a lot out of you. And so many, many evenings, she will attest, I might have been a little bit grouchy and certainly exhausted. And so thank you so much, Leah, for better, for worse, she'll be getting more of me at this point.
Well, I think that's good for better.
I hope so. I'll do my best. Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you so, so much.
We're almost going to break in this meeting.
Ah, you know where to find me. So much, so much. Thank you so much for everything. Dustin, thank you so much.
Much time for us all, Mike.
With growing flowers and raising butterflies.
Yeah, it was a privilege. You know that. You know that. Anybody knows that, for sure. Thank you, David. Appreciate it. Come on up!
Leah, are you ready for it? You've got time.
Congratulations, John.
Yeah, well, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
My husband wants it ready for me. I wanted to bring some kids along with me.
Fabulous high school, and unbelievable. Can't blink, right?
I'm sorry, boys.
Yep, I had this. Yours has a little more pepper than salt. Mine's more salt than pepper, right? Yeah, partner, so great seeing you. Yes, absolutely.
Congratulations. I just retired seven weeks ago, and my son goes, "Congratulations, Dad."
It's a two-way street, for sure.
Muds more, partner, this is real.
And Miranda.
The other half, sometimes it's like that.
I have three years.
Now, I'm really going to cry.
Yeah, well, I...
That's why you come in, right?
We were together a long time.
Thank you so much. Chris, thank you very much. Frank, so great seeing you. Been a long time. I remember those Friday with Franks like they were yesterday. Frank would come down and treat the kids to movies and rewards. Thanks again, folks.
Thank you. Thomas, we haven't done this for any longer. Well, you're our first one. She stopped the meeting. She was upset, she said, "Why?"
The letter said the board office, so I was...
We're looking at our kitchen, so all the food that we get, we have the sandbags, is all in the gym, and there was no... I apologize about that.
Better than ever, no problem.
So sorry.
Thanks, I'll let you folks get back to business again.
Thank you for patience. That is someone who deserved that. He might have been dropped at home, but he wasn't dropped at school. Okay, let's go to number six. It is recommended that the board approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 15, 2025, as seen in Exhibit 1.
Salute.
Second.
It moved in second, Mr. Adams.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed. Citizens' comments on agenda items are welcome at this time. Participants are limited to five minutes duration. Are there any citizens' comments? If seeing none, we'll move to number eight. It is recommended that the board approve payment of bills for the month of July pending audit, and those are presented in Exhibit 2.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Adams?
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes. Motion passed.
It is recommended that the board approve a resolution for payment of bills per Ohio Revised Code Section 5705.41, and that list is in Exhibit 3.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving to number 10. It is recommended that the board accept the financial reports from the treasurer for July 2025, and those are summarized in Exhibits 4, 5, and 6.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
That was great. A motion passed. Moving to number 11. Personnel, excuse me. It is recommended that the board accept or approve the following personnel items. 11.1, accept the retirement resignation of teacher Thomas Fleming. That big word. Effective June 1, 2025. 11.2, accept the resignation of classified employee Nancy Kennedy, effective September 1, 2025. 11.3, accept the resignation of classified employee Paul Ward, effective August 4, 2025. Accept the resignation of classified employee Ashley Purdy, effective the 25, 26 school year. And 11.5, employ the following as 100% teachers per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure and pre-employment screenings, effective 25, 26. Oh. Oh, okay. Brooke, the following as an intervention specialist, Brooke Esterly. I apologize if I mispronounced. That's fine. All right. Patricia Miller, intervention specialist. Stephen Tordrop, science teacher, and Hannah, help me out. Palantus. Palantus, thank you. Elementary teacher. And then moving to 11.6, employ the following as classified substitutes per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure and pre-employment screening, effective first day assigned, and that would be Gina Carney, and Tricia Evans. 11.7, reassign the following classified employees per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure, and that would include Michael Cooper with two assignments, Melissa Heminger, Megan Marinucci, Jennifer Ray with two reassignments, Jessica Wright, Brian Kuser, and Paula Schuss. 11.8, employ April Jowers as a two-hour educational assistant at Shrop Intermediate School per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure and pre-employment screening, effective August 20, 2025. 11.9, an adjustment of hours, approve adjusting the hours of the office assistant position at Shrop Intermediate from four hours to 4.75 hours per day, effective the 25, 26 school year. 11.10, approve a summer athletic director stipend for Kevin Vaughn in the amount of $5,000 for the summer 2025. 11.11, approve the following athletic supplementals for the 25, 26 school year per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure and pre-employment screening, and those would include for the various positions Jeremy Miller, Derek Garber, Paul Miller, Brian Kunder, and Marcus Mason. 11.12, non-sport supplementals. Approve Melinda Weakland as sophomore class advisor at 2% in the 25, 26 school year per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure. And 11.13, is approve a two-year administrative contract for Stacy Manzo to serve as Springfield Junior High Associate Principal.
So moved. Second.
Just a couple of things. Of course, the retirement of Tom Fleming, that's...
He got his belt.
He got his belt, he's good. You see the employment, those are our last four, no hires, we're right now.
Just don't say it.
I'm not going to say it, okay?
I would also say, please add in, let me add in, I neglected to tell them that the board meeting was tonight. I'm pretty sure that they would all be here, as they've been aware, but that falls completely on me. With everything that's been going on, I just blanked on the board meeting. But I showed up at the right place.
You did show up at the right place, that's... The summer athletic director stipend, this was a, the summer stipend or supplemental has been in place for the athletic director for over 25 years. In 2015, it had gone away, and I think that's when all supplementals, I think that's when some of the money problems was happening. So for 10 years, it has not been processed, so we brought it up again for all the hard work that Kevin does during the summertime. He is on a 204 contract, but he works all summer long. So they're very well-deserving of that stipend.
And 204 is...
I mean...
No, I mean, that means that he's not paid for that.
Right, absolutely.
He's done in June.
Absolutely. And I think, oh, Stacy Manzo, she's already starting to meet with the middle school teachers. So it's, I think she's got a lot of great ideas and really bring them back into as a team. So we're really excited.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
All right, motion passed, all are employed or...
Yes.
Acted upon.
Yes.
All right, number 12, resolution providing complimentary passes. It is recommended that the board approve a resolution regarding complimentary passes and waiving payment of any entry fee to events for the 25, 26 school year, and those passes are outlined in Exhibit 7.
So moved.
Second.
And these are the passes that you receive every year to attend home events, away events, or metro.
Non-terminal.
Huh?
Non-terminal.
Non-tournament, yes, non-tournaments.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
All right, motion passed.
This isn't new?
No.
Oh, I don't think I got one last year.
They were at the board office to be...
Yeah, I think, shall we have any of the voices? Shall we respond here?
Yeah. Thank you.
Moving to a school calendar. It is recommended that the board approve the revised 2025, 26 school calendar. The new calendar reflects October 13 as a non-student day for the purposes of holding a safety drill for all the district staff. And that is reflected, the outline is reflected in Exhibit 8.
So moved.
Second.
This is going to be the second year that we've done this. We did it last year, and we had first responders from all different communities coming here. We had a chance to partake in it. It was a very realistic type of event. So that was at the high school, and we did two scenarios at the high school. This year, we are going to do it at Spring Hill. We're going to do it at Shrop, and then hopefully next year, Spring Hill, so we can get all the different buildings in. So if you do have a chance on October 13 to join us, please do so.
Yeah, I participated last year.
Yeah.
Got to go.
Yeah, I mean...
You just really need to go.
Dustin and all the safeties, they really put a lot of planning into this, so it's really interesting to see.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes. Motion passed.
Motion passed. Excuse me, it is recommended that the board approve a service agreement with the Village of Lakemore Police Department to provide an attendance coordinator for the 2526 school year, am I correct, that's for the whole entire district?
That is for the high school.
For the high school.
When we brought the SRO on at Spring Hill, the SROs at Spring Hill and Shrop, they performed the attendance coordinators duties for those buildings.
Thank you, I don't know if that was time to ask.
That was a perfect time to ask.
So moved.
Second.
Where exactly does this, do they do?
Oh, that's a good question, so, you know, there are the different laws that we have to follow for truancy, so what he, what this person is, he's already gone to some lessons on how to work all the paperwork and the meetings and everything, so he will be in charge of having those meetings with parents who are charged with the truancy of their students. So there's like different thresholds that the kids have to go to, and he'll be monitoring that, and of course, being that the high school has more truancy than?
Right.
The little kids, we didn't want the SRO officer out in the building all the time at the high school, so that's why we're joining us.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to bus routes, it is recommended that the board approve the bus routes for the 2526 school year and authorize the superintendent or designate to make changes as necessary during the 2526 school year to address enrollment changes and safety issues, and these routes are provided in Exhibit 10A, 10 through 10C.
So moved.
Second.
And what this allows too is that, because you're approving the bus routes, if we have to change routes, either Dustin or myself, they just don't.
And the bus route, as Mr. Hofer alluded to earlier, kind of a living document this time of year, so that, you know.
No, we're, they will change. Yes. They can have change.
Since this, yes.
So are we approving?
Since we put this on the table, they have to. They have grown legs and changed, absolutely.
Yes, they do.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Furlong?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Motion passed. It is recommended that the board approve a resolution declaring transportation to other schools impractical in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Sections 3327.01 and 3327.02, and therefore will offer payment in lieu of providing the transportation, and that policy is available in Exhibit 11.
So moved.
Second.
And this, of course, we do every year too, it's determining if transportation to the public school or the private schools is doable or not, and this also changes year to year, you know, sometimes you say, yeah, it's a practice this year, but it might not be next year.
And we approved some last month at the meeting, this is a new school that popped up, that, I don't know if it's a new school, but we had students attending, that they were homeschooled, now they're attending this school, so they became eligible under this provision, but we do work to try and, where it's feasible to transport students, like last year, we brought one school off this list and transported them, saving us significantly, and this year, we brought another school off, so we constantly take a look at that and make adjustments where we can.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Excuse me. The Athletics Coaches Handbook, it is recommended that the board approve the revised Springfield Athletic Coaches Handbook, effective for the 2526 school year, and that handbook is available in Exhibit 11.
So moved.
Second.
And this is a handbook that Kevin works on, a lot of times, all the different coaches had all their different handbooks, so what he did is he created one that so everybody follows, you know, each team has their own little nuances, but this is for the whole athletic department, he works really hard on it, and he updates it every year.
It's nice he wrote it.
Yes, it is.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Motion passed. Our next item is the Athletic Student Code of Conduct, it is recommended that the board approve the Athletic Student Code of Conduct for the 2526 school year, and that is available in Exhibit 13.
So moved.
Second.
And this, of course, is, you know, our athletes are held to a little bit higher standard than our students, they have to follow the regular student code of conduct, but there's also the athletic one that has some consequences, if they misbehave, that's gonna affect their games of, you know, being, you know, maybe not being allowed to play, or being benched or whatever.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mrs. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Number 19, Electronic Devices Policy, it is recommended that the board approve the revised Electronic Devices Policy, effective the 2526 school year, and that revised policy is available in Exhibit 14.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so this is, so based on House Bill 96, we did have, we did have electronic policy last year, the rules were last year that we had to just create one, and, you know, we worked together as, as a team, and we came up with what we thought was going to be what was best for Springfield. House Bill 96 now made it a law, and they put some strict rules into it, and one of the rules was that you cannot have your cell phone during the instructional day, so we waited for about three or four weeks, because they were gonna tell us what an instructional day was, because they were arguing amongst themselves on what that instructional day is, and they state that, it came out last Monday, it stated that instructional day is any period of time in which a student is expected to be in attendance, and includes not only formal instruction, but also supervised activities such as transitioning between classes, recess, meal periods, and field trips, so our new rule is from the moment they come into school, because that's when they're starting to be supervised, to 2:30 when the bell rings, their cell phones have to be put away, turned off, and kept in their book bags, not on them, but in their book bags, so that's something different, I mean, the kids really grasped onto it last year, we did a, you know, we had some problems, you know, not problems, but new in the beginning, but by the end, that really tapered off, so this is gonna be another start forward.
Do we have the same consequences that we did?
Yes, the same consequences, we didn't change that, all we did was just change basically the lunch period, because we allowed our students to have their phones during lunch period, so. Any questions on House Bill 96 and the electronic device policy?
They might have to talk to each other now.
Huh?
They might have to talk to each other now.
You would be surprised, because even in lunch, even though they were allowed to use it, in the beginning, everybody, but then towards the end, you really had the conversations, and kids were actually reading, like when you're walking, I mean, now they're still allowed to have their Chromebooks, so they'll still have their Chromebooks, but Mrs. Warner bought giant games for them, so for some rewards, they get to go into the gym, have some games, I think they had some board games up for, if you're AP and you're in the library, so you're right, kids have to talk to each other, so.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mrs. Furlong?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Motion passed. Student Handbooks, it is recommended that the board approve the student handbooks for Springfield High School and Junior High, Shrop Intermediate, Spring Hill Elementary, and Springfield Preschool Center for the 2526 school year, and those handbooks were provided as attachments to the board.
So moved.
Second.
And then again, every year, we approve the handbooks, my goal for next year is, I mean, there's different rules for all the different handbooks, my goal is to make them a little bit more aligned, so they kind of follow the same format, so parents don't have to learn a new handbook every single time they change class, so.
Thanks for the highlighting.
Yes, the highlighting, it really helps out, you see, not too much in Shrop and Spring Hill, because they were just a little bit overwhelmed.
Right.
So it was, but Michelle and her team really worked hard.
They sure did.
On their handbook.
Good.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Furlong?
Yes.
Furlong?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. It is necessary to appoint a delegate and an alter, alternate to the OSBA Annual Meeting, Business Meeting in November 2025, and I've neglected to speak with the board about who would be interested, are we sending two candidates or?
You said one candidate and an alternate, so we just hit a nomination from somebody?
I nominate David Hofer.
And then as the alternate?
Donnie Furlong. Man, your eyebrows went up pretty high.
You surprised me.
Good with that, everybody?
All in favor, say aye.
I'm fine with that, true.
Okay.
Is everyone ready, I mean, are, any other nominations, what I meant to say, okay, then, everyone in favor of those two accepting, being our delegates, please indicate with Mike.
All right.
Aye.
You guys are good to go then.
All right. Thank you.
Number, the next one is the Village of Lakemore Resource Officer MOU. It is recommended that the board approve a memorandum of understanding with the Village of Lakemore to provide the services of a school resource officer as required by Ohio Revised Code Section 3313.951, from July 1 through 2025 through June 30, 2026, and this memorandum, this MOU is provided in Exhibit 15.
So moved.
Second.
We did this for one year, because what we wanted to do was we want to align all SRO MOUs together, so next year, we'll approve all three of them.
Smart move.
That was Dustin.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Furlong?
Yes.
Motion passed. At this point, do you have reports, straddoms?
We're not gonna do financials, we're only one month in, I do wanna talk about two topics of today, the audits coming out, and I want you guys to read it, we'll put it on the website, as far as audits go, you know, they sit and park and analyze every Ohio Revised Code, two of the three were no mysteries, one issue is obviously the OFC project, and we're wrapping that up, the second issue is, we don't perform a gap, they know that coming in, until we get our fiscal oversight, we'll determine as a board if we want to spend $50,000 performing a gap report, now, it used to be, when I first started, I was told that you perform a gap report if you're thinking about doing a building, that's not true, you do a, when you do a building, you do an official statement that you hire outside people to put it together for you, so I don't know why it's done, what it does do, though, is you don't get that nice shiny certificate in my office, and that means a lot, I guess, it meant a lot to me when I was younger, but I'd rather, like I said in that email, there's a lot of districts that don't do it, because it's expensive, you gotta prepare it, and then you gotta audit it, the state auditors will audit it, charge you to audit.
Really?
So, you know, read it over, as far as this versus prayers, it's actually a better audit, which is good, and I commend my staff for that.
So, again, where is it gonna be posted?
We could have the link on our website, that people can go on there and hit the link and go, it's out of the Ohio Auditor site.
We're gonna have to go there too, I mean, you're not posting it, sending it to us.
I will send it to you. Yeah.
We have to sign it and get it.
Yeah.
And everything.
Right, right, the second issue that's coming up is really important one for me, Chris Polling is retiring, so we're gonna go through interviews for two days, tomorrow evening and Thursday morning, and it's critical, you know, I think about it, I've been doing this for 25 years, and I've only had to hire one person, not here, here, everybody, it was union, right, so you didn't have much of a choice, I mean, you hoped and prayed, and we really got lucky, on the most part, in my department, I've had wonderful assistants, Chris is very, very good, so this year, obviously, that now that that position is no longer a union position, we went out and got, we're gonna be in five or six.
We have six candidates.
Six candidates, so we'll go through it, there's gonna be, you know, we're gonna get help, there's gonna be four of us there, administrators, and we'll decide at the end of the process, what's the best fit for the district, so, you know, but that makes you nervous, you know, it's an unknown, and the time we have to train them is not as much as we'd like it to be, but we'll be okay.
Who's, who's the administrators that will be interviewing?
Myself, Dustin, Shelley, Mary.
Okay, thank you.
Like Mary needs another one, but she's good at it, so. So that's it for us, for me.
Thank you.
I think.
Central Office Report?
Been busy getting ready for school to start, getting, trying to get everything ready to go, I did send out an email yesterday, letting everybody know, as we've talked before at the board meetings, but notifying all the parents that breakfast and lunches will be free again this school year under the Provision 2 program, we, that was our first of, unfortunately, probably many notifications and requests to, if you have not received a notification that you were direct certified, which over half of our families were, so that's, we have very strong numbers in that area this year, but we will be really pushing to make sure we get applications submitted from the other half of those families to make sure that we are getting all the reimbursements that we can to make this program successful. So, that, doing that, and bus routes, I know there's been a lot of work going on with that, and getting buses ready, and getting drivers ready, we have a handful of new drivers that will be starting tomorrow, so we're looking forward to that, and getting everybody to school.
On the academic side, we're excited to get everyone back in school, so the halls have been shined, and now it's time to get them a little scuffed up with the feet of our, of our children, so it's exciting to have them back in there, if you didn't have the opportunity to be at Open House the other day, I just happened to be at Shrop, Ms. Monakina was at both Shrop and Spring Hill, the number of people who actually entered the doors, they were smiling, they were excited, the kids, the parents, you know, the siblings, whoever, they were all excited, they were kind, and they're looking forward to it, and we're just excited to have them back, so, once again, busy time of year, and making sure we have everything, but ready to roll.
So, it's also, like, I've already had one parent meet, actually, a couple parent meetings, but today's parent meeting was a family that, they've lived in Springfield for the last couple of years, but their children attended another district just due to some, where they lived before, and they realized that Springfield was where they needed to be, so it's good to hear that we're getting some families back into our district that, or having new students arrive, and as far as preschool, we have 53 students currently enrolled for next year. And as far as preschool, we have 53 students currently enrolled for next year. And then we have, we start screening tomorrow and Thursday. Um, so we have 15 students being screened to fill some more of those spots. So the three and four-year-olds are also still coming. So.
So, um, and what I'll do is, um, in a couple of days, I'll give you an update of our enrollments. Um, the numbers I'm looking at were getting, I mean, we had, we had so many kids, um, enrolled today. I mean, it's, it's just, it's crazy. I mean, it's crazy. Um, so, you know, tomorrow, as Mary said, it's, it's an exciting day. Um, you know, first day for grades one through six, seven and nine. Seven and nine, they're having their Connections Day. And Connections Days was something that they did a while ago. We brought it back. Um, I think this is our second year of doing it now. We brought it back. Um, seventh graders get to come in, meet the teachers, see the building and do everything. Even though ninth graders have been there for two years, they're starting their high school career. And high school is so different than junior high that we want them to understand that, you know, now things that they do is going to start counting for their graduation. Um, so it, it gives a time for the teachers to really get to know the kids. Um, changes this year, wow, if I'm not mistaken, I think we have 19 new hires.
Stop counting.
Nineteen. I went, I counted them today as I went through. Nineteen new teachers. Nineteen. I mean, we were at a, uh, we had a, uh, our in-service this morning and there were so many young kids walking around. Yeah, it felt really old.
It felt like high school.
Yeah, it felt like high school. I mean, that's, I mean, it's, 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 it's great. It's wonderful. Uh, we of course have one new administrator. We have one old administrator that's now going to be a new administrator. Uh, we have one counselor who's now an administrator and we have one teacher who's now an administrator. So lots of changes. Not only there, our front offices have changed. So we've got Mrs. Kirby, Mickey, who's at Shrop. This is starting her second year.
Yes.
We got, um, Tatiana.
I know, I know who you're talking about.
Mrs. Art, who, this is her first year at Springfield and she has just been working her tail off to get that place, um, you know, uh, set up the way she wants it. We had Debbie Reed, who this is her second year at the high school. And, um, and, um, Debbie, um, Michelle Nagel, who this is going to be her first year at the high school. So we have all these new administrators and all these new front offices. And so it's, 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 it's a new day. It's a new day. Um, also remember the time changes. High school stays the same. Shrop, uh, is going to be drop-off at eight o'clock by the parents. School time is 8:20 to 3:05. Springfield, parent drop-off at 8:40. Their school time is going to be nine o'clock to 3:40. Um, don't forget this Friday, we have our first football game against Waterloo. But prior to that, we're having our third annual. And this all started because of Miranda. When my first year here, she farted me with emails after emails. And out of one of those emails was, we need to set up a tailgate for the first game. And it has grown unbelievable from the first year to now. And I think people are really looking forward to that. Uh, we will be doing hot dogs. So, uh, the administration, the board will be doing hot dogs. Oh, but we're not putting it, but we're not putting it in mannequin. It will be in a bun with ketchup and mustard and relish, like a hot dog should be. Um, the, uh, it starts at five o'clock. So please join us when they come to for our first game. It's going to be exciting. And, um, as always, if you have any questions or concerns, call, email if I'm in, come see me. And I think this year's going to be a great year. I am really excited.
I have something else.
Oh, I would like to do a shout-out to Marinatha Church for providing breakfast for us for our convocation. It was well beyond expected of what we were going to get. If it was us providing it, it would have been donuts and some muffins and maybe some fruit and fruit bars. But they had sausage and gravy and, and.
Egg bake.
And what?
Egg bake.
A what?
It's called egg bake.
Egg bakes and, and they had, they did have donuts and muffins and, and just bagels.
A yogurt bar.
Oh, yeah, the yogurt.
I mean, and it was really, they did an unbelievable job. And we have such an amazing partnership with Marinatha that they, they do, going to do good by us. So, thank you, Marinatha.
Can I say a quick thank you?
Oh, you sure can.
Thank you. Um, so every, when Baron became a sophomore, I took over being a team mom for the football team. Um, and then I don't think Coach Lolly really had a choice this year because we kind of bombarded him that we're doing this. Um, every Thursday, we have a team feed. Um, I don't know how it is, but I know that Cynthia will probably chime right in. But meal time is family time. Um, I know everyone gets busy. Last night, we actually sat and not, well, we kind of stood around and ate dinner together for the first time, I think, almost all summer. We were constantly going. Um, so bringing a team of 45, 50 kids together with their coaches is kind of a big deal. You go out there and, you know, you have their back. And it's every sport. It's soccer, it's cross country. They do the same thing, parents. Um, so this is the third year that I've kind of reached out asking for some help. I put, I think this out on a Thursday and by Friday evening, I had every game filled. Um, we have Lakemore United Methodist Church. They do a spaghetti dinner every single first game on Thursday night. Um, Lakemore Council and Administration, the Springfield Trustees, the board members here and the admins. The youth football is going to take one. We decided as parents that we were going to do a cookout. Springfield Assembly, Marinatha Church, um, I believe the women's club also. And then Uncle Tito's is doing our final one. It's kind of a big deal. Um, every player brings their mom or a woman that is a big, um, influence in their life. And then, um, senior cheerleaders as well. And then we get to stand up and talk about our senior and how important they were and stuff like that. So he hosts that almost every year. So that's, it's about 100 people that he brings in. So I just wanted to give a shout-out.
Thank you. That was, that was great.
Miranda, thank you for all that work.
Yes.
I absolutely love it.
I, I know you do, but the thank you doesn't hurt.
No.
And I forgot something I wanted to say.
Go right ahead.
Uh, those who worked with me at the high school know that when the building was clean, I would go around and like, oh, how's that look? How's that look?
Really, Cynthia, you?
Yeah. But I just, you know, I've been in some of the building. They look great.
Yes, they do.
The corners are actually square. Yeah, I, but I want to thank everyone that had a part in getting the venues appropriately prepared for the students and the teachers. There's, you know, it's just so important. Thank you.
A lot of work.
Anything, anyone else? All right. So items worthy of our note. We've already mentioned that August 20, I think that. Uh, the 21st, all grades one through 12 will appear, which means big yellow buses too. Uh, August 25, preschool open house is at 11 a.m. August 25, kindergarten open house at 1:30. August 26, preschool first day. August 26, kindergarten, last names A through L only. And on the 27th, kindergarten, last names M through Z only. And then August 28, we get all the A through Zs, uh, coming in. It's an all-day kindergarten, I mean, all the kindergarteners are reporting that day. September 1 is a Labor Day, no school. And our next regular school board meeting is September 16. And it will be at the, on Pickle Road at the administration preschool. And I think those are all, any other dates?
Uh, no, I think that's good.
All right. At this point, are there any citizens who we wish to have, make comments? And they do not have to be limited to agenda items. Anyone? Seeing none, then I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second, Mr. Adams.
Who did the motion?
Dave.
Mr. Hofer.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mrs. Farola.
Yes.
Furlong.
Yes.
Mr. Mason.
Yes.
We're going to move to.
Thank you, moving, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
The girls are winning two cents so far.
But that's exciting.
Can you watch set three?
Yeah.
Play 25 straight.
So Miranda, you'll let us know when we find out?
Yes, I'm going to send out an email. I'm going to send out an email.